Good evening and welcome, everybody. Thanks for joining us for a public hearing tonight. This is for an Eagle permit application for C-Cord Dam and Smallwood Dam Restorations. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division and I'll be helping to moderate the public hearing tonight. Before we get too far, just have a couple logistical things to go through. First off, this is our agenda for the night. First, we're going to go through an introduction, which we're doing right now. But the big thing is to know is that there's actually two parts to the hearing tonight. We're going to start off with informational session. Where the Four Lakes Task Force will have an opportunity to describe the proposed projects, followed by a question and answer session. That won't go any later till about 6:45, the informational session. And then after that, we're kind of going to go into the official hearing portion where you'll have a chance to make a comment for the record on the application and the projects. We're also going to cover ways to submit an official comment other than providing a comment tonight. And where to find other information and who to contact for with further questions. In case you haven't done one of these public hearings with us, so just a couple of things to take note of. All lines are going to be muted during the hearing, so you'll be able to hear us, but we can't hear you. At this time, you can submit any questions using the question box in the Zoom toolbar. When we get to that question, answer portion, you'll also have an opportunity to raise your hand in Zoom, but we'll cover how to do that a little bit later. And also, we're recording this hearing, so this hearing will be on our YouTube channel in a couple of days and you can review it again at that time. So right now, I'd like to invite our other Eagle staff who are on the line to introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Michael Size. I'm with the Water Resources Division and the Dam Safety Unit, the Regional Engineer. And tonight I'll be the hearings officer. Jared?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Jared Sanders. I'm the Assistant Division Director and Water Resources Division. I oversee the family of permits that we're going to talk about tonight, so.
Good evening. My name is Brian Rudolph. I'm the District Supervisor for the Resource Unit and Water Resource Division out of the Bay City Office.
And I'm Luke Trumbull, Supervisor of the Dam Safety Unit and Water Resources Division, and I will also be assisting Mike with the review of these applications.
Excellent. Thank you all for joining us tonight and for giving those introductions. So now we're going to move right into kind of this informational session. So we're going to invite a couple of people. We're going to unmute you in the audience to present on the project here. It looks like we have a Paul Drew, David Kepler, and a Ron Hanson. So we're going to find you in the audience and we're going to unmute you on our end. And then you'll have a chance to unmute yourself and I have your presentation here. And let's see here, you'll have a chance to start your presentation. And so we're just taking a second here to find everybody in the audience. All right, I think I think we have everybody unmuted. So I'm not sure if you're going to take turns or how are you going, how are you going to do this, but if you just, I have your presentation here and actually go to the first slide. If you just want to let me know when to change slides, I can change them for you. Just a reminder to keep this, just the purpose of this is to describe the process in a non-promotional nature, so. And you know, about 10, 15 minutes would be perfect. So whenever you're ready.
Thanks, Ryan. This is Dave Kepler. I'm the President of the Four Lakes Task Force. And with with me is Ron Hanson of the Spicer Group. He's our owner engineer. And Paul Drew, who is with GEI Consulting and he's the leading the dam project area here for for the team. And so I'm going to have Ron start off and then we're available for questions. We have other experts on the line as well. As we Q and A, if there's a very specific thing that needs to be answered, we can pull them in. So anyway, with that, Ron, I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, hey, Ryan, if if Ron's not on the line, can you add Kelsey Sutton from Spicer Group? I think she's going to start us off here.
Yep, okay. I sure can. Looks like Kelsey, I think, is on here. We did have Ron, but he might have gotten kicked off. Oh, Ron's on there. Ron, it looks like you can unmute yourself. When you'd like to begin. Oh, I think we can hear you. Are they there, Ron?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Can you unmute Kelsey too?
I'm unmuted.
We can go to the next slide. And I think we were going to have Kelsey cover the Eagle permitting and the other permits and give an introduction here. And then I think we were going to have Paul Drew go through and and talk about some of the engineering. So with that, Kelsey, I'll have you get started. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Can you, Ryan, can you hear me okay?
Yep, sure can.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for attending tonight's public hearing. My name is Kelsey Sutton. I'm a Project Manager with FISA Group. Myself and Paul Drew are going to be providing a brief overview on the C-Cord Dam and Smallwood Dam project. So the joint permanent application is for construction activities where the land meets the water covering permit requirements derived from state and federal rules and regulations. The applications and all of the required supplemental information is submitted to Eagle for their review and comment. And all that information is submitted on my waters, their online database system. Permit applications were submitted for the C-Cord Dam and the Smallwood Dam for the following temporary and permanent regulated activities of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act 1994 Public Act of 451. So for Part 303 Wetlands Protection, those regulated activities include the deposit or placing of fill material, dredge and removal of soil or minerals, and construction operation or maintained use or development. For Part 301 in the Lakes and Streams, regulated activities include the excavation and or filling at or below the ordinary high watermark. For Part 331 Flood Plains, regulated activities include the excavation and or filling within the 100-year floodplain. And then there's 315 Dam Safety. Based on the scope and the type of activities for both of these permit applications, both of these were individual permits which require the 20-day public notice period. So outside of the Eagle Joint Permit Applications, there are several other applications and permits that Four Lakes Task Force is applying for, along with ongoing coordination with several other agencies. The additional permitting items that are not a part of the Eagle Joint Permit Application include the Part 91 Sillar Erosion, the Notice of Coverage for Construction Activities that are greater than five acres, Row Commission and Local Planning Building Permits, Local Floodplain Permits and SHPO and Section 7 Coordination, which includes and involves the cultural resources and threatened endangered species. Next slide, please, Ryan, if you're doing the screen. Thank you. So each dam had a separate Eagle Joint Permit Application submitted that included the impacts to those natural resources that I mentioned in the previous slide. For C-Cord Dam, for the proposed Part 31 Floodplain impacts, there's a net fill of 56.9 cubic yards. And that's a total or the sum of the cut and fill quantities. And this does exclude the riprap quantities per permit instructions. For Part 301 in the Lakes and Streams, there is a total of 874 cubic yards of fill below the ordinary high watermark. And the ordinary high watermark for this project was the summer legal lake level. Also, the project will result with base flow consistently passing through the dam, which has been shown to have environmental benefits. Specific to three, Part 303, wetland delineation of the dam site was conducted by a specialist. And the permanent construction impacts to wetlands was calculated to be the .61 acres. Mitigate for the impacts, Four Lakes Task Force has.
I think we might have lost Kelsey. Well, she's still on the line. Kelsey?
How about now?
Oh, there we go.
Okay, what was the last thing that you guys heard?
.61 acres.
Okay, and then for the mitigation for the impacts, Four Lakes Task Force has purchased those required mitigation credits. And all the information has been submitted to the mywaters permanent permanent application. And then for Part 315 Dam Safety, Paul Drew from EI will provide a brief summary of the dam design itself. And then for Smallwood Dam, specific to Part 31, there is a net cut within the 100-year floodplain. For Part 301 in the Lakes and Streams, again, we will be consistently passing base flow. And the project will have a 730 cubic yard fill below the ordinary high watermark. And that ordinary high watermark again is the summer legal lake level. For Part 303 Wetland Impacts, again, the site, there was a wetland delineation completed and the appropriate documentation was submitted with the application. And impact wise, there was a permanent impact to 2.36 acres. And again, Four Lakes Task, Four Lakes Task Force purchased the required mitigation credits from a local wetland mitigation bank. And then Paul Drew will provide the summary for the Part 315 Dam Safety Improvements. And then specific to Smallwood Dam, due to the amount of wetlands impacted and length of shoreline protection proposed, this application also requires a federal review by the EPA. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Paul Drew with EI. He's going to provide a summary of each of the dam project. So next slide, please, Ryan and Paul, take it away.
Ryan, can you hear me? Okay, is this coming through?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, we're going to give a brief summary of both projects. We're going to start with C-Cord Dam, but the intent here is to show at a high level, plan views of the proposed site improvements and then some detailed cross-sections of a couple of the features. So we'll start here with C-Cord. So next slide, Ryan. All right, so this is a proposed site plan. I know there's a lot of, lot of information on here and just to orient yourself, this is the road in the southern portion of the project, the C-Cord Dam Road. And the right side of the page is Lake Shore Drive. We're going to start on the left side of the page, which is the western portion of the project and work our way to the right side, which is to the east. So those site features, we're going to start with, there is staging and lay down areas as well as new access roads on the far west side of the project. And these really are intended for two things. First, to help facilitate construction during the restoration project and then also maintain post, post-construction to give operations and dam safety personnel a chance to maintain the projects as and has good site access as well. As you work your way to the right or to the east, which would be the far westmost embankment, that is going to be restored by adding a number of features, including riprap on the upstream portion of the project. A new permanent cutoff wall to mitigate mitigate against seepage and erosion through the dam. Widen the crest and flatten the downstream embankment with a new filter, filtered blanket that will show as well as rock protection into the tail race of the river. The existing gated spillway is going to be reconstructed with two new larger spillway gates to increase spillway capacity and we'll show that in the next slide. And then the existing powerhouse structure, as Kelsey mentioned, where the intention here is to always pass base flows, base river flows both through the winter and the summer months. So the current powerhouse has been decommissioned. And we are retrofitting that into a new low-level outlet to pass those base flows. As you work our way to the east of the powerhouse or the easternmost embankment, there's a significant amount of reconstruction on the structure. As you see a portion immediately to the east of the powerhouse that is going to be restored in very similar fashion to the westmost embankment. But one new feature that we're adding to the project because there is no, no formal auxiliary spillway on the site, very constrained location here. This is a location of our new auxiliary spillway that is going to combine with our new primary spillway upgrades to pass large flood events that equal or exceed the Eagle requirement for dam safety. And then as you work your way to the last part of the project, the current embankment in this location is low compared to the west side. So we are going to extend that embankment to high ground as it ties in right before Lake Shore Drive on the eastern portion, easternmost part of the project. So if you go to the next slide, Ryan, we have a couple of cross-section features. It's a show in detail. We talked a lot about embankment restoration. And this is a typical cross-section of what that looks like. So what you're looking at on the far left side of this page is the C-Cord Dam empowerment. And as you work your way to the right on page, you're working your way downstream past the dam into the toe of the Tidabwasi River. So the upstream most feature that we're adding is adding rock slope protection. This gives us protection against wind setup and wave run-up. Not only during sunny day or windy days, but also during extreme flood events when you do get active waves and potential for erosion on the upstream portion of your embankment. Downstream of that is our new cutoff wall that extends from the dam crest all the way into the dam foundation. And this is really to slow down or stop seepage coming through the dam and inducing seepage-induced potential failure modes. And then as we work our way past that, we are going to widen the crest. Currently, the crest is six to eight to maybe 10 feet wide. We're looking to get at least 15 feet across the crest. And then we are going to flatten that downstream slope to increase embankment stability. And then within that improvement, also adding filter materials that if any erosion does get or any seepage does get through our cutoff wall that we're able to collect it and safely pass it in a controlled manner. And then the last feature here on the downstream portion is adding rock protection during large flood events, which was seen during the May 2020 flood event, that tailwater comes up and you start getting erosion on the downstream portion of your embankment. So we are adding in rock protection to mitigate against that during large flood events. And next slide, Ryan? All right. And so this is what we talked about in terms of upgrading our spillway capacity. The graphic in the upper left, this is the existing condition. These are spillways that were built in the 1920s with former retainer gates, which were about 10 feet tall. And to open them, they opened up the hoist system in the upward position. And we identified very early in the project that for the types of flows or storm events that we need to pass to meet or exceed Eagle requirements, that we needed to add a significant amount of spill capacity here at the primary spillways. So the majority of those structures are being demolished and reconstructed with deeper, taller crest gates that open up in the downward position. The picture on the upper right, not from this project, but it's from the same gate manufacturer posing to use. As you can see on the image there, as you lower the gates, water flows over the top of them. And as the pond comes up, you're able to pass significantly more flow through this type of gate and configuration as compared to the existing configuration. So by doing this, we were able to increase the spill capacity of the primary spillway by about 70% compared to existing conditions. And then when you take in this primary spillway flow, plus the new auxiliary spillway on the left embankment, we're able to greatly exceed the current Eagle requirement for spill capacity. I think these are the only slides for C-Cord. I think we're going to have similar information for Smallwood next. Yeah, so a quick overview of what Smallwood Dam looked like post-flood and we'll show you some of the new features on the next slide. Right, so this plan view is a little skewed. The left is more, say, southwest and the right is more northeast, but we'll start on the left side of the page. This is McKinney Road and the existing Wolverine Drive. It's a pretty long run to get construction activities or construction materials into the site. So there is a new improved access drive as well as a new parking lot and lay down area that will be used both during and after construction. And as you work your way into the site, we are restoring both embankments in a very similar manner that we're doing at C-Cord. The one exception is the majority of the embankments have a cutoff wall already constructed in the late 1990s. But we are using similar features on the up as a C-Cord Dam. So widening the dam crest, flattening the downstream slopes, adding filter materials as well as rock protection. Similar as well for the, for the powerhouse that is being decommissioned and retrofitted into a low-level outlet similar to C-Cord. And now we're using the same primary gated spillway technology at C-Cord, here at Smallwood as well, with new, deeper, taller crest gates to increase capacity. The, I call the northeast embankment or left embankment, looking downstream here on the east side of the, or the far right side of the page. That embankment was designed to overtop as it did in the May 2020 flood event. We are revising that intent by adding a new auxiliary spillway, deeper auxiliary spillway that's able to pass larger amounts of flow than we were to pre-flood. But in addition to that, we are not leaving that left embankment low. We are raising that embankment to be able to contain the flood, flood event without overtopping. And to do this, we had to significantly extend the embankment to the northeast to get to high ground, which also led to a new access drive and new project staging lay down areas. Next slide. All right, so very similar to C-Cord, very similar updates here. The one exception is the cutoff wall does exist, but there are some portions of the new embankment that will be adding a new cutoff wall. But in addition to that, all the features will be be consistent. The upstream slope protection, widening the crest, flattening the downstream embankment with filter as well as as rock protection. Next slide, Ryan? Right, so this again will look very similar. The intent here is that all of these, all these primary spillways and powerhouses look very similar when we're done for ease of operation. So the same story here that we are demolishing the majority of the existing spillway, constructing a new crest gated spillway structure with taller gates. One difference here is that we were able to double the spill capacity here at the, at the primary spillway. The main reason for that is is that the impoundment, Smallwood Lake, does come up during flood events faster and higher than it does in C-Cord. So by getting the extra capacity with the extra surcharging of the impoundment, able to double the capacity here of the primary spillway. So with this addition of the primary, plus the new auxiliary spill capacity, able to pass very similar design storm that we are at C-Cord, which again does exceed the current Eagle requirement. I think that, Ryan, those are all the slides we had in terms of the dam safety update.
All right, thank you. Yeah, thanks for that presentation. We're going to move into the question, answer part. So just a couple of things. If you have a question, you can do it two ways. You can type it in the Q and A box. You'll see an option in your Zoom toolbox at the bottom of the screen. For the Q and A, that's where you don't want to put that in. Or if you would prefer to raise your hand, we can call on you, unmute you, and you can unmute yourself and ask your question. And then if you're on the phone, if you have anybody calling in, you can type pound two. And what that'll do is it'll raise your hand in Zoom. And then we can unmute you on our end. You have the opportunity to mute yourself. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that this is an opportunity for any questions on the application or the project. If you have a statement that you'd like to make, that portion of the public hearing will come a little bit later. And everybody will have a chance to make a statement for the record on this application project. So with that, I do have a couple of questions. Feel free to enter those questions that you have. And the first question is, will the C-Cord Lake summer level, what will be the C-Cord Lake summer level and winter level? And so these are going to be directed to our Eagle staff. And then if it seems appropriate to divert to the applicant, they can do that.
All right, I think that question can can be handled there by Luke Trumbull.
Sure, thanks, Mike. So the proposed C-Cord level, lake levels will be consistent with the 2019 court ordered levels, which I have in front of me, which are 750 feet or 750.8 summer level and 747.8 winter level. And that's in the NGVD 29 datum. So the proposed levels are the same as the pre-flood levels as they had been under the previous FERC licenses and were adopted in 2019 in the Circuit Court order, so.
All right, thanks, Luke. Is there a planned timeframe for each dam restoration completion?
Dave, you want to take that one?
Yes, you know, if all the permitting and bid letting gets through, we plan to start in early next year and our target is to have them complete by 2024.
Thank you very much. And this one might need a little bit of interpretation. Was it worth lowering the lake beyond winter levels? Or maybe that isn't worth lowering? Be the lake beyond winter levels and causing all the overgrowth and erosion damage to second lake for over two years? Is there something that we can, I guess, address on that question or elaborate on?
Again, Luke or maybe Brian, you guys want to fight over answering that one?
I can take a crack at it from, from the dam safety stance. The C-Cord and Smallwood Lakes were both ordered to be lowered following the 2020 floods by FERC when they were still under federal jurisdiction. And they were ordered to remain lowered at their current elevations until full evaluation of the dams could be performed and it was decided that it was safe to return them to normal operation levels. And I think with, with all of the engineering and evaluations of both dams, the decision was that it was not safe to return the lake levels until, you know, some of these proposed rehabilitation and repairs and modifications were made. So that's why from a dam safety standpoint, the lake levels stayed down. I don't know if Brian wants to add to that or, or anybody else.
No, I don't think there's anything to add to that. I think that's, that's the right answer.
All right, thank you all. All right, are there any other questions? For the phone caller, I think we have phone callers calling. If you have a question for our panel, you can select pound two and that'll raise your hand in Zoom. And then we can unmute you on our end and then you can unmute yourself and ask your question. If you are on by, by computer, you can either type your question in the Q and A box or raise your hand and we'll call on you. I've got another one that came in. Once the two dams are restored, will the lake levels be restored before the rest of the dams are repaired? So once the two dams are restored, will the lake levels be restored before the rest of the dams are repaired?
I'm assuming that they're referring to the, the two dams further downstream. So Paul, I'll let you take that.
Yeah, the intent, the intent would be that C-Cord and Smallwood will be finished first, right? So once, once the construction is complete, we have all the dam safety features in, they will be raised as soon as that's possible. So if everything goes well, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, that's spring, summer of May of 2024, which would be before the lower two. So that is the intent.
Yeah, that, that's correct.
Yep, yeah, thank you very much. All right, it was said that the dams wouldn't be used for power generation. Does that still stand?
Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. If you listen to Paul, we are actually dismantling the power equipment. There's not, there is no power generation license available anymore through FERC. That's been surrendered. And so we need the capacity to run the dams. And so there, there is no plan to bring hydro power on us.
All right, thanks for that question and for the response. Was there a study in how much water can flow below Smallwood Dam?
Eric, this one you again, Paul?
I'm struggling maybe with the intent of the question. What we are designing these for is what comes in during these large flood events. What we are designing these for is what comes in during these large flood events is passed safely through the spillways. With minimal surcharging. In the impoundment, so for example, if if you got our IDF storm, that whatever comes in goes out. And we're operating the spillways, so we're not surcharging the lake and decreasing dam safety. So as a program wide, what we're looking at is all four projects. So whatever comes in at C cord, we'd be able to pass in Smallwood, and whatever leaves at Smallwood could pass to Beaville and vice versa. So hopefully I understand the intent of the question, but we're analyzing flows throughout the system for range and flood events for all four dams.
Thank you for that. Is there any chance we could get normal lake levels back by late twenty three if the weather cooperates and construction goes quicker than expected?
Oh, I would say. We're trying very hard to get them time. By the spring. Time in twenty twenty four for a summer. You know, Bill, but. Where, you know, that's the current time schedule, so. I I don't think it's something we've been to change right now, and that's our schedule. We still have a lot of things to work on to make sure we get this thing through, so it's a function of when we start. And you've seen us do some pull ahead projects to kind of make sure we stay on that path, so. But I'm not, we're not, I think we've been pretty consistent that these are. Pretty aggressive timeframes right now and what we want to do the dams properly.
And thanks for that answer. Alright. So another question, how are you going to fill them? Assuming they fill back up with water, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I can I can take a stab at that, Ryan. The intent here is that if we have our our. Infrastructure in place, say it's the spring of twenty twenty four. That we will slowly, so every, all the work is going to be done, the crest gates that we showed. Those will be built in the down position, meaning they won't be impounding water. So when we're ready, we'll slowly raise those gates and rely on spring runoff, which comes from, you know, early spring storms as well as. The snow melt from the previous winter, so we're trying to time this so that we're closing these gates as we're as we're getting through that event. To refill the lake by by the summer.
Gotcha. Yeah, and there was actually a follow up question entered. How long will that take to fill them back up?
Still working through that detail as part of our refill plan. You can't refill the lake in a day just from a damn safety purpose. But we're working through our refill plan and we're anticipating that we could do that in one season as long as the timing works well.
So maybe Paul, just for clarity to the, there's a minute, there's a permitted flow that has to go through the dam, so we can't just turn them off. And fill them up, so there's a minimum flow that goes through. And so in springtime, when there's a, there's more volume going through, it. It's it will, it'll be a month or two probably is my, you know, layman estimate. But that's when we get into summer, it takes a little longer because there is a minimum flow that has to continue to go through these dams. And so if we get them done early in the year. And get them permitted to bring back up, then it's a little bit faster and. It should be available by, you know, June timeframe if we had an early. If we had a spring, April, May kind of startup kind of thing.
Yeah, I I would just add that that's that's one of the things that we'll work through during the permitting process. Because obviously we have to, you know, protect the downstream fishery and all of those kind of things, and so. You know, none none of this is is simple, and so. You know, we'll we'll work through what is the right process to make sure that there's adequate flow in the river. For the environment and users downstream as well as, you know, getting the getting the, you know. Lakes back as, you know, quickly as possible, trying to balance those two things.
Yeah, and I think you also care to have a safety issue that you can only bring them up a certain speed to make sure they, you know, you can't, don't put too much. Stress on when you bring them up, and it's also. Ron reminded me here, there's it's also a function of how much raining we get, right? And so it's it's all about weather dependent on how we predict this.
And there is kind of another kind of follow up question on that. So if we have a spring or summer like we did this year, it will not get filled up in a proper time?
I don't think that's correct, no. I think we'd have to look at that. These are pretty shallow systems all through the water that flows through them. So I don't think that would, I wouldn't go for that assumption.
Alright, and any any other questions? I don't have any in my box at this time, and maybe while we're waiting a couple seconds. Just to let you know where we'll go from this, after we get done with this Q and A session. We'll talk about how to make a comment for the record other than the hearing. And then we'll go through the hearing part where you'll have a chance to make your statement tonight. Get a couple more seconds. I'm not seeing any other questions. That are pop up, that are popping up, and if that's the case, we're going to go ahead. And move on to the next part of the hearing. So I'm not seeing any questions, so we're going to go ahead and move move forward. Thank you to our presenters and to everyone who asked a question. And for the applicant representatives for presenting and answering those questions. And to our Eagle staff, so we're going to go ahead and move on. And as mentioned, going to identify the other ways to submit an official comment in case you don't want to make a statement tonight. On the project and application, you can provide your comments directly into my waters. There's you see a couple links on your screen. We're going to have those entered into the chat, so you'll have them there as well. But you can also submit a comment by mail, and I know we have some. People on the phone, so I'm going to go ahead and read this off. You can submit your comments by mail to Eagle, E G L E. Water Resources Division. Lansing District Office. Five two five. West Aligan Street. P O Box three zero four seven three. Lansing, Michigan, four eight nine oh nine. And the comment period after the public hearing tonight will be open for ten days, which is going to be October sixth, twenty twenty two. And then just so you know, after we go through everybody's comments, we're going to go ahead and we're going to show the screen again so that you have the information here. In case you need to see it again. Alright, we're going to go ahead and get the hearing portion started, so like to invite Mike to read the opening statement for us tonight.
Thanks, Ryan. I gotta apologize in advance for the lengthy monologue here, but we'll just breeze through it as fast as possible. So good evening, my name is Mike Size. I'm the District Representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. Otherwise known as Eagle. And tonight I'll be serving as the Hearing Officer for this public hearing. On the Eagle submissions, first numbered H P B dash S eight three five. Dash H seven S A S. For C cord dam. And submission H P B dash W K. P one dash Q two three S six for Smallwood Dam. To describe how this is going to go tonight, I'll begin with some background information, and then I'll describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide comments, and we will spend the remainder of the time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will provide a short summary in closing. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering. A variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling of the lake, stream or wetland. Constructing a dam, constructing a marina. Placing shore protection or constructing docks. As well as building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland or flood plain. The law governing these responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety four. As amended Act four fifty one. We are here tonight because Dave Kepler of Four Lakes Task Force has proposed the following for C cord dam. To partially demolish the existing concrete spillway and reconstruct the concrete spillway at a lower elevation. Replace existing tanner gates with new crest gates. Make structural concrete repairs to the spillway, step chute, stealing basin and center pier. Install a new operator's deck. Install steel sheet piling cutoff wall along the embankment crest and at spillway locations. Raise and extend the the spillway training walls. Constructing new auxiliary spillway. At the left, at the left embankment. retrofit the existing powerhouse with a low level outlet. Flatten the left and right embankment slopes and install internal filter drainage layers with the toe drain. And install reinforced concrete sister walls alongside the left and right train walls. The proposed activities will include excavation of approximately two thousand nine hundred ninety one cubic yards of material. Including seven hundred and nineteen cubic yards from below the ordinary high watermark. And fifty seven cubic yards within the hundred year floodplain. And to appro- and to place approximately three thousand eight hundred and twelve cubic yards of fill. Including one thousand nine hundred and six cubic yards below the ordinary high watermark. And fifty two cubic yards within the hundred year floodplain of the Tidobosse River impacting approximately. Point six one acres of existing wetlands. The applicant also proposes the following at Smallwood Dam. To partially demolish the existing concrete spillway and reconstruct a new concrete spillway at a lower elevation. Replace the existing tanner gates with new press gates. Make structural concrete repairs at the spillway, step chute, stealing basin and center pier. Install a new operator's deck over the spillway. Install a new steel sheet pile seepage cutoff wall along the earthen embankment crest and spillway areas. Raise and extend the spillway training walls. Construct an auxiliary spillway at the left embankment. retrofit the existing powerhouse with a low level outlet. Flatten the left and right embankment slopes. Raise the left embankment and abutment press elevations. And install reinforced concrete sister walls alongside the left and right train walls. The proposed activities would in will include. Excavation of approximately four thousand seven hundred and seventy six cubic yards of material from below the ordinary high watermark. And eight thousand one hundred and twenty three cubic yards from within the hundred year floodplain. And approximately fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty eight cubic yards of fill. Including five thousand sixty cubic yards below the ordinary higher watermark. And four thousand nine hundred forty two cubic yards within the hundred year floodplain of the Tidobosse River. Impacting approximately three point zero four acres of existing wetlands. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by Part thirty one. Floodplains, Part three oh one. Inland lakes and streams, Part three oh three wetlands protection. And Part three fifteen dam safety of Act four fifty one. In general, we must consider that the effect of the proposed project on the stream and wetlands. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part three oh one inland lakes and streams of Act four five one. Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by Section three zero one zero six of Part three oh one. First, the department shall issue a permit if. If it finds that the structure of project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. Two, the department shall not grant permit, shall not grant a permit. If the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or natural resources of the state. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four five one. Eagle is charged to make the following indications. As required by Section three oh three one one of Part three oh three. A permit for an activity listed in Section three zero three zero four. Shall not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest. That the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from activity and that the activity is otherwise lawful. A permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that an unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. A permit shall not be issued unless the applicant also shows either of the following. The proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in a wetland. Or a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give everyone. Interested in the C cord dam and Smallwood Dam projects. An opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use to make. In their in their decision making on whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in decision making. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether or not. There is widespread support or opposition to the project. Just a moment, I will outline the procedures we'll use for taking your comments, but before I do so. I need to mention that the notice for this hearing was published in the Midland Daily News, and that began running on September sixteenth. So to ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we're going to use the following steps. First, the applicant and or their consultant will have an opportunity to describe the proposed project, which we've already run through. Ryan will then call on those who have indicated during pre registration. That they would like to speak in a general order in which they were registered. When all pre registered attendees have spoken, Ryan will then ask if anyone would like to make a statement. Anyone else who would like to comment, please raise your hand and zoom and keep it raised until you're called upon. When your name is called, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will then be given four minutes to make their comments, and Ryan will indicate when you have one minute left. Please begin wrapping up comments and and within your allotted time. And if need be, Ryan will indicate when your time is ended. We ask that everybody be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Only one person should be speaking at a time. Please do not interrupt the speaker, and please also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide their, to provide a fair. Opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed projects and listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider. In making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed projects. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days, starting today and ending October sixth. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten day public comment period also be considered in Eagle's decision. Additional information and comments may be submitted to the dam safety unit at the Lansing District Office. The address being again, five two five West Aligan Street. Lansing, Michigan. Four eight nine zero nine. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit. For the project as proposed or with modifications or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagles My Waters website. And searching for the permit numbers indicated at the introduction. Thank you for your attention, and now Ryan will begin calling the names to those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
Now, thanks, Mike. Yeah, thanks for reading that opening statement. Just to recap, I guess how we're going to do this a little bit. I have a list of people who during pre registration indicated they want to make a comment of five people. So we're going to call your names in order and then identify who's going to be the who's up next so that you can be prepared to give your statement. Once we get through all the names, we'll go to people who have their hands raised. So if you're not on this list and you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand and zoom by clicking. Clicking the appropriate button to to raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can select pound two, and that will raise your hand and zoom. And then we'll call on you and you can make your statements from the phone. You'll have four minutes. I'll give you a heads up when you're at three minutes, so you have one minute left. And with that, also please list your name, and then if you have any association or anyone you're associated, any organization you're associated with. So with that, we're going to go ahead and we'll start calling off names, and again, we'll call your name off, we'll unmute you. You can unmute yourself and then begin when you're ready. So the first person I have on my list is Dave Kepler. Dave, did you have a comment or did you indicate you wanted to make a statement because you were presenting? So we'll unmute you, Dave, in case you have a comment to make.
No, I'm sorry, I just put that in because I was presenting, but obviously I support the project. So, thank you.
Alright, yep. Thank you, David. Alright, so next up is Brian Bowles, and after Brian is Jerome Swasarsky. So Brian, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself. And begin your comment when you're ready. So you should see a microphone button on the lower left hand side where you can. Click to unmute yourself and. Click to unmute yourself and begin.
I just wanted to make a statement that I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So next up is Jerome Slasarsky, followed by Dennis Miller. So Jerome, we're gonna find you here. And unmute you. So you can make your statement. All right, I don't see a Jerome in attendance. Not seeing it either. Okay, thanks. All right, uh, Dennis Miller is gonna be up next then, followed by Joel Verneir. So Dennis. If you're on the line, we'll find you and unmute you at our end. Not seeing a Dennis either. No, Dennis, uh, Joel, Joel is on though. All right, Joel, um, you're unmuted on our end. You can begin when you're ready.
Thank you, uh, Joel Vernier. I live on Seacord Lake. I'm the Seacord Township Supervisor. I have residence both on Seacord and Smallwood Lake. I gotta tell you, the spirits are soaring on these two lakes and really up and down the Tidewater Water System with. Uh, the friends that I have up and down the system, the positive momentum is getting everybody's spirits lifted. And we want to thank uh, the Four Lakes Task Force and of course Eagle for working together. Uh, to make sure that when we reconstruct and or construct our dams, we're gonna make them safe for years to come. I am hoping, as we all are, that the learnings that are taken away from this project. Will help in restoring other vintage dams throughout the state of Michigan, which I believe dam safety is already has a list of them. So that we can uh, keep all of the dams in Michigan safe for years to come. Thank you very much for everything you all have done.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Joel. All right, so that's. Uh, everyone on my list, if there's anybody on the line who would like to make a comment, we're gonna make sure we have plenty of time. Um, for anybody who wants to make a comment, because, because everybody will have to have that opportunity. If you do want to make a comment. Uh, feel free to raise your hand in Zoom. Uh, or if you're by, on the phone, you can slide pound two. And that will raise your hand in Zoom as well. Anybody else on the line like to make a comment? Not seeing any hands raised. All right, while we're waiting a couple of seconds to see if anybody decides to make a comment. After we get through this part of the hearing, we'll go through that slide again with the other ways to make a comment in case anybody changes their minds. Uh, or has something additional to say. Uh, we'll have that opportunity um, by in, by other methods of making a comment. And then we'll go who to contact if you have additional questions. Um, before we wrap up. So with that, still not seeing any raised hands. All right. And again, if you're on the phone, it's pound two. And if we don't have any more raised hands, then Mike, I'd like to invite you to read the closing statement.
Hey. Well, up. All right, um. Thank you for your comments and cooperation. Uh, we appreciate your interest in the proposed projects and that you've taken the time here uh, to be with us tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until October sixth. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed projects. Uh, the hearing is now closed. Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Uh, I've got that slide back up that we had talked about that has the information. Because we have a couple of people by phone, again, just gonna read a couple of things off uh, here. A C. Cord Damps is submission number H P B S eight three five H seven SAS. And Smallwood Dam is submission H P B W K P one. Q two three S six. So those are the submission numbers that you can reference. Again, the My Waters links are gonna be in the chat. And if you want to submit comments by mail, it's to Eagle Water Resources Division, Lansing District Office, five two five. West Aligan Street, P O Box three zero four seven three, Lansing, Michigan, four eight nine zero nine. And the comment period, um, as Mike mentioned, will end after ten days, which is October sixth. And then if you have further questions um, on this tonight, you can contact uh, Michael Size, Regional Engineer. Uh, nine eight nine six one nine four two nine five. Or size M at Michigan dot gov by email. That's S I Z E M. At M I C H I G A N dot gov. Or Lucas Trumble, the dam safety unit supervisor. Uh, his phone number is five one seven. Four two zero eight nine two three. And that's Trumble L at Michigan dot gov, T R U M B L E L. At M I C H I G A N dot gov. All right, on the very last thing, um, Jared, do you have any closing comments before we wrap up here?
Well, I'll be, I'll be really quick, Ryan. I'll echo what uh, Mike said about thanking everyone for taking the time. We only had a few comments tonight, but uh, I know we have many, many more um, listening in. So if you are so inclined and have something to say, really would encourage you to submit your uh, public comments, public input. And uh, um, transparency is is really a priority for us uh, in the permitting process. So. Um, otherwise, just uh, thanks for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Jared. And thanks for everybody who participated in this hearing tonight. Uh, just as a reminder, this was recorded. Uh, it'll be on our YouTube channel. Uh, Eagle's YouTube channel the next couple of days and it'll be closed captioned in case you uh, would like to watch it again or in case you missed something. Uh, with that, I hope everybody has a great rest of your evening. Um, good night.